This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, everyone. This is Stephen Akela, Chairman of the Libertarian National Committee. I am your host and tonight we are playing the LNC special meeting on third, twenty twenty five, and we're going to go ahead with a roll call. Mr. Malagon, whenever you're ready, sir.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, are you present?
I am present.
Mr. Dar.
I am here.
Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Here.
Miss Yena Scavage?
Here.
Mr. Boss?
Present.
I am present. Mr. Vincent?
You're so I keep.
Mr. Lamb? Mr. Chatterton?
Present.
Mr. McGee? Mr. Nana? Mr. Thompson?
I am here.
Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Dassing? Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Aloha. I'm present.
Wiley? Mr. Johnson?
I'm here.
Mr. Hirsch? Ms. Coward? Ms. Halussy? Mr. Bracco?
Present.
Mr. Weir?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Chair, it appears I will just do a quick run through since some people came into the room. Uh, Mr. Lamb? Okay, since Mr. Lamb is not present, but Mr. Martin is, Mr. Martin would be seated for Mr. Lamb. Mr. Dassing? Since Mr. Dassing is not here, it looks like Mr. Bracco would be seated, so I'll just make note of that. And uh, and none of the other alternates are. So, Mr. Hirsch, are you still not? Are you here?
I am here.
Oh, you are here. Okay, Mr. Nana? So it looks like Mr. Hirsch would be seated for Mr. Nana. And no Ms. Halussy? Or Ms. Coward? Okay, I believe that completes the role and we do have quorum. All right, excellent. So next up on the agenda is item C, which is opportunity for public comment. We've got ten minutes. So we'll go to uh, seven, seventeen tops. Uh, please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized for public comment at this time. Uh, Mr. JJ, Jonathan Jacobs, and then Mr. Ballard.
Uh, may I yield to Mr. Bowler?
Mr. Bowler, take the floor, sir.
Yes, uh, I just had a observation committee chair if it was still on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Commission committee chair, is that still on the agenda?
It is currently, yes, sir.
Um, just briefly, I believe that when the committee made the recommendation, it was under the understanding of the motion that was passed by the LNC of accepting Mrs. Harlow's resignation from the LNC in all subcommittees. I've spoken with Ms. Harlow since she has related to me that she did not resign from presidency. As to whether there's vacancy is uh, kind of an issue that needs to be resolved. And so I'm happy to, you know, still be uh, willing to be appointed if there is vacancy uh, at the end of it.
Okay, all right, fantastic. When we get to that item, we'll discuss it as a board and uh, move forward as we see fit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowler. Uh, Mr. Jacobs?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to speak very briefly in favor on a personal basis and speaking as an individual on the uh new ethics and disciplinary policy. I think that it is very good. I like the idea of a graduated approach. Um, and I would note, however, that I believe that while this is codified, you would still have the option of doing so under your current parliamentary authority, even if this would not be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. Anybody else seeking to be recognized for public comment at this time? Going once, going twice, three times, hearing none for public comment, then we're going to go ahead and move on to the adoption of the agenda, item A, under housekeeping. Um, first off, the chair is seeking a uh, a motion and a second to move the agenda.
I have a proposed amendment.
All right, hold on. Do we have a uh, a motion, a second for the agenda?
The agenda is presented.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chatterton, go ahead.
Ah, yes, um, I would like to propose that um, three items, the motion to form the investigatory committee, the motion to fill the secretary committee, or the secretary vacancy, and um, the PM proposal um, noticed by uh, Mr. Thompson regarding nominating periods would be moved to the end of the agenda of new business with previous notice to be replaced with the resolution to adopt the Overwatch and Operator Program to be the second item on the agenda um, behind the IALP proposal. And um, if appropriate, I would then like to speak to my reasoning for that proposal.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second. We'll now move on to debate on the amendment. Mr. Chatterton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Um, so I am making this motion um, on the basis that I have been very busy this week um, contacting board members. Um, it is my belief that it is imperative for this board to proceed with the investigatory committee appointment um, based on past actions as well as recent actions this week. And um, in my discussions, I have yet to be able to secure an agreement that will see sure that that motion is passed. So at this time, however, I have had some interest in some ongoing discussions. I don't know if those are wished to be followed through on by others, but um, I make this motion as I believe this would allow us to maintain the status quo in our current situation and allow us to have ongoing negotiations about our vacancy for secretary, the investigation, um, and allow the potential vacancies there to be used to settle concerns that might cause some people to not wish to see Mr. Malagon removed from this board. So I wish to propose that those things be delayed so that we can consider those vacancies as a means to can uh, address concerns for people that might otherwise oppose his removal and have the opportunity to discuss um, amicable solutions that would clear any concerns for a removal and um, prevent any worries of factional power grabs in the process of trying to deal with a disruptive and, in my opinion, unfit member on this board, and we can hopefully move forward with all of those matters. And in case any deals cannot be reached, this proposal will allow us to maintain the status quo. Um, the reason for the inclusion of Mr. Thompson's policy manual amendment would be that if such a deal is reached, we could have a proposal that would fill all vacancies in agreed upon terms, but also allow us to seek input from the party member in these times of negotiations and allow potentially a trustless solution to that problem. So I hope that we could maintain our status quo if people are not prepared to vote for the IC and that we would delay those items to the end of our agenda, which is very long. So I think that will effectively not have them heard tonight. And we can continue to find a agreeable solution to resolve what I think is a major liability for this party. And I think that we need to slow down our filling of the vacancy of secretary and allow that to be considered by our board members as well as their party members before we proceed so promptly with this.
Ms. Hayes, then Mr. Ford, Ms. Hayes?
I call the question.
There's a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
I don't believe that would be necessary. I think we're just about at time anyway. We have about twenty seconds left on this agenda item.
All right, yeah, let's see.
Mr. Ford has a hand. Do we not want to hear from him?
Yeah, I have an objection. I'd like to hear from.
Well, there is, there is technically a motion if there is a second. Going once.
Also, I, I'm, I'll second to call the question, but I, I do believe we're at time. At this point, I do believe, Mr. Chair, that you would have, someone would have to move to extend time. Otherwise, we would just go to a vote on the amendment.
Well, I'll move to extend time for five minutes.
Second, extend time. There's a second. Um, all in favor of extending time, please say aye.
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 Nay?
Nay.
All times extended by five till seven nineteen.
Right, as a point of, as a point of order, who made the motion to extend time?
That was Mr. Ford. I believe it was Mr. Redpath that seconded it. Um, I believe the Hayes motion to uh, call the question died for lack of second. So Mr. Ford and then Mr. Redpath and then Mr. Chatterton, if your hand is still up.
Right, so uh, briefly, I'd like to speak to the extension of the secretary vote. I'm frustrated, and that's another statement. Executive Committee level, officer level openings should be considered with the greatest care. My frustration the night of the election of the new chair was not with the new chair, but the fact that in an election that typically takes a year, under normal circumstances, was conducted in less than an hour. For something as important as an executive committee session, there should be nominations. The individuals accepting nominations should give speeches, brief ones. And then there should be a period of time, I think ideally a week, before it's submitted to an electronic or an in-person vote, depending on the circumstances. That gives people in the party an opportunity to recognize their pleasure, displeasure, support, non-support, noda, whatever of these critical openings. This rush to judgment where everything is constantly a nomination, motion to, motion to call the vote does not allow for any due process, does not allow for any careful consideration. And I think quite frankly, the membership deserves better. So I'll be actually motioning, depending regardless of the outcome of this, that we move the secretary vote uh, to a one-week consideration, which I don't think will be detriment to the party. And uh, let's conduct officer-level elections with thought. Thank you.
Mr. Redpath and then Mr. Martin and then Ms. Hayes. Mr. Redpath?
I, all I can say is I uh, will need, I, I'm not clear on what the exact motion is, so I just want that reviewed before we vote. Thank you.
Sure, I, I'll be sure to review it before we, we head to the uh, vote on the amendment. Uh, Mr. Martin?
Hi there, guys. Um, thank you so much. Aloha. I uh, appreciate giving me the time. I think this is a really good idea to take the most difficult and dramatic and contentious items that are the arguably the least urgent, especially with divided opinions, and that we deprioritize those and instead bring the business that's arguably more important to the front. I think it's just a good idea and it'll give everyone a little time to decide where their comfort level is and have the opportunity to talk to each other. I'd love for some of those to be open discussions if possible, and I'd love to see just what's possible if we can try to find some common ground around the things that make politics go and removals and um, you know, all that, that, that's, that's not what makes politics go, but we do need to present credible leadership and I'm totally committed to that and I'm excited, you know, to kind of hopefully um, maybe see, see the patterns that we've been witnessing break a little bit. And I would just encourage everyone today that if it's within your power to do so, um, let's put business first and uh, let's put the political BS second. Uh, I, I want to also just thank Mr. Pat Ford for what he said. It was, I felt very salient.
Ms. Hayes?
Oh, mine was a relic, but I'll just say really quickly, I find it very funny that Mr. Chatterton just basically said he wants to move this because he doesn't have the votes and he's talking about removal when this is supposed to be an investigatory committee. Um, the recommendation, if any, comes would be from that investigatory committee. So I just think that should be noted for everybody if this were to pass, that Mr. Chatterton is absolutely biased and um, prior to this even starting. So uh, but that's all I have to say.
Ms. Hayes is absolutely correct on that matter.
All right, well, I don't see any more hands raised, so we will move on to a vote on the amendment. Uh, just to reiterate, the amendment uh, is for three items, motion to form an IC, motion to fill secretary vacancy, and the policy manual change uh, noticed by Mr. Thompson would be moved to the end of the agenda of new business. And in its stead, the resolution to adopt an Overwatch program would be moved to item B after the IALP Constitution motion. So is everybody clear on what we're voting for?
Oh, I'm sorry, just want to make sure. On the, on the amendment, excuse me, on the agenda, are we saying that items B, C, and I are what are moving to the end of the agenda? And that is the motion.
And then P would be moved up to B?
P would be moved up to B?
Correct.
That is correct, my, correctly my intent.
All right, we'll do a uh, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready? Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Boss?
Aye.
Mr. Chatterton?
Yes.
Mr. Dar?
Nay.
Mr. Bracco?
Yes.
Oh, actually, I'll put that in at the end. Oops. Didn't mean to be so angry here. All right, Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
Obviously.
Right, um, so it's actually Mr. Martin. Apologies.
Of course. So I'll be voting aye.
But I'll have to change those ballots.
What did the chickens vote for?
Uh, I will vote.
Crossing the road.
Mr. McGee? Or I guess Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Nana?
No. For the record, for the, for the record, I voted nay.
Oh, okay, so you are here. Uh, I will amend that. Uh, oops, that's not what I wanted to do. Sorry, apologies. What is going on here? There we go. Okay, uh, Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll vote no.
Mr. Thompson?
I, I, I second Mr. Redpath's long sigh and then a no.
Mr. Vincent?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Miss Yena Scavage?
No.
Mr. Chair, the vote is eight to seven. Do you wish to vote?
Um, I will abstain.
The motion fails. All right, so we're back on the adoption of the agenda.
I've got a motion.
Who is that?
Pat Ford.
Mr. Ford, Mr. Ford, you're recognized.
Thank you. Uh, I motion that A, we accept nominations for the vacancy for secretary of the Libertarian Party this evening.
Go.
B.
Mr. Chair, this is out of order. We are at time for this item. We'd have to go straight to a vote on the agenda unless someone moves to the time.
I'll, I'll move, I'll move to extend five minutes.
Second.
Any objection to extending for five?
I object.
All right, all in favor of extending for five, please say aye.
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 No, say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Can you roll call this, Steve? I don't think I nays things working.
Uh, sounded pretty close, but we can do a roll call. And this is on the extension of time? Correct. That was Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
And seconded by who?
I motion, oh, I'll second it.
Mr. Boss?
Uh, I to the motion to extend.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Chatterton?
Yes, to extend.
Mr. Dar?
No.
Mr. Dassing? Or Mr. Bracco, sorry?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, to extend time.
I will vote no. Or nay, rather. Mr. McGee?
No.
Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yep.
Mr. Watkins?
Yep.
Miss Yena Scavage?
No.
Mr. Chair, the total is nine to six to zero to zero. Do you wish to cast a vote?
I will abstain.
All right, motion passes, so we are extending time for five minutes. We'll go to seven thirty. Um, Mr. Ford, you're recognized.
Yes, A, that we accept nominations for the, oh, vacancy of the secretary of the Libertarian Party tonight. B, that we hear speeches from those accepting nominations. C, a one-week period where debate and discussion within the party, so as the members can.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, as a point of order, th- this is out of order. We have a special agenda. But we, we have, this is a special meeting where we already have an agenda. Um, there cannot be changes to the, like, to addition of items to the agenda.
That, that is true. It would have to be eh, it would, it wouldn't. We can always make a motion on hearing speeches during the item, but we cannot add, we can only subtract at this point, or move things around. So it would be technically out of order at this time. So I do.
All right, then I'm gonna, um, then that's fine, then I'm gonna move to table the election of the secretary this evening.
All right.
Objection.
There's a motion to remove the secretary uh, item. Is there a second?
Yes.
Objection, objection.
There's objection. Do we feel like we needed to, to debate or we just to move on to a vote?
I wouldn't mind the debate.
I, I would be curious as to, as a point of order, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if it's in order to remove an item from, that's been noticed. It was noticed by Mr. McGee. Uh, someone could just not move, could, could just not make the motion at the time if they wish to not do it, but this was Mr. McGee's noticed item.
Objection, point of order.
Notice item can be stricken from the agenda.
Items can't be stricken from the.
I don't believe that.
And I have objected to it, so let's vote on it.
And Mr. McGee?
I do believe it is generally in order.
Point of order, um, sorry to interrupt. But my understanding of Mr. Ford's motion was just to move the voting period and not get rid of the item. But that was my understanding of what he was intending to do.
Uh, that's not what he stated.
Oh, it's not, okay, then maybe I misunderstood then.
It would have been.
I'm, I'm I'm open to friendly.
Go ahead.
I'm open to friendly amendments. Mr. Watkins' point is correct. I simply don't want to make another rush to push through an officer's election in under one hour. But we know who's nominated yet.
We, we have a um, motion to, to, to strikes. We're going to go ahead, go into debate and then move on to a vote. So who would like to be recognized for debate?
I would like to be recognized for debate.
All right, Mr. Chatterton, then Mr. McGee, Mr. Chatterton?
Uh, yes, so I would have said it would have been in order, I think, that um, we could have just taken the nominations and moved on because that part, I believe, was absolutely part of our agenda tonight, and I think that was really the implicit part of Mr. Ford's amendment. However, I believe we are considering to table. Um, as I had said in my first motion, I wish to delay this decision because I wish to um, make sure that we could consider a investigation that I believe would likely go to a removal. Um, however, the consideration around that was to try to preserve status quo that this position could be taken in consideration to alleviate concerns from people who may be concerned to, to take that action up and that this position may be able to be used to allow an agreement to be reached that something could be done in that manner. I agree as well, wholeheartedly with all of the points that have been raised by um, several members of this board, that this should not be a rush decision. So my previous logic is based on um, consideration of that as well, but also focused on concerns for liability for the party and the practical realities that I believe a group here tonight wishes to force a decision through on this secretary race that I don't think is in the interest of the party. And I hope to see that stop. So if people did not want to take my motion to maintain the status quo completely, I would absolutely be happy to still delay this decision so we can absolutely go through it and have a thorough consideration. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mickey?
Sorry, yeah, could I respond to that? Um, I would like to say that um, well, I do respect the uh, the, the intent by the gentleman from Region One. Um, what I will say is um, the idea that um, it would necessarily lead to a removal in any sense is completely out of order. And uh, it, it, the fact of the matter is, the gentleman has no experience with a runner sixty-three procedure. Um, which honestly, I'm the only one on this committee who has experience with a post-to-post runner sixty-three procedure on this matter whatsoever. And so I completely disagree with the assertion by the gentleman from uh, Region One. Um, I, however, I, I do, I do, I do respect his um, intent order. However, I think it is um, woefully, woefully misplaced. Um, that's what I will say.
We are out of time. It, yeah, five minutes are up, which means discussion has ended and uh, we will move on.
A motion to extend five minutes.
Objection, objection, objection.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, I'm gonna do this a little bit differently. All in favor of extending, raise your hand if you know how to do so in Zoom? Might make life easier under reactions potentially. All right, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, seven ayes, all opposed, raise your hand?
Uh, my hand's raised, sorry.
Mr. Ford, uh, your hand's still up if okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, so the nays have it. We'll not extend time. We'll go immediately to a vote. Hold on, baby. I'm gonna meet myself. We'll go immediately to a vote. I'll hand it off to Mr. Secretary and uh, we'll vote on this. But what is the motion, please?
The motion is to strike the noticed item, which is the secretary vacancy. And who seconded Mr. Ford's motion? I think it was me.
Oops. Okay. Mr. Bost? Mr. Mr. Chatterton?
Yes.
Mr. Dar?
No.
Mr. Bracco?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
No, I'll say.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
I will vote nay. Mr. McGee?
No.
Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
Pass.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Vincent? Mr. Watkins?
Yeah.
Miss Yana Scavitch?
No.
Back to Mr. Redpath?
I'll vote no.
Mr. Chair, the tally is seven to eight to zero to zero. Do you wish to vote?
I'll abstain. Motion fails. All right, since we're out of time, um, we are gonna move on to the final agenda. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote there. Certainly, sir. Mr. Bost?
Yes.
Mr. Chatterton?
Dan.
Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Bracco?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
No.
Ms. Hayes?
Oui.
Mr. Martin?
No.
I will vote aye. Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Nana?
Aye.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Abstain.
Mr. Watkins?
Uh, also abstain.
Miss Yana Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the. Roll is ten to two to three to zero. Do you wish to cast a vote? Um, I'll abstain. All right, motion passes and we have an agenda. Next up is unfinished business and items postponed from previous meeting. Ethics Committee recommendations for adoption. Mr. Jonathan McGee, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Um, so. The, actually, the, um, proposed. Um, Ethics Committee report is not that much edited from, um, what was, uh, presented in Grand Rapids. Um, actually, most of the major amendments to this, or edits, rather, um, were actually proposed by Karen and Harlow. And so, um, I think, uh. I mean, uh, this is, this is something that's been literally. At this point, eight months in the making, it's been run by several different attorneys. Uh, Ms. Mason, uh, JJ, like, just about everyone you could imagine. And this is where we're at. Um, I think it's fair. You can disagree. Uh, at this point, I think we just should go to a vote.
Uh, Ms. Hayes, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just been saying, as a member of the Ethics Committee, we've, we've been working very hard on this and, um. Most of the last revisions were just basically like, uh, from me. There were some from me. They were just basically like. Fine, fine tuning things. Um. And I think this would help, passing this would help alleviate many members' concerns about certain things. And I think. Uh, it would do a disservice to us not to pass it. So I recommend everybody vote for it and I'm ready to move on if you are.
All right. Well, if there's no more hands up, then we can, oh, Mr. Martin, you're recognized.
We're speaking on the, um, International Libertarian. Constitution, right?
No, 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 this is the Ethics Committee's, uh, report.
So I'm sorry.
That's gonna come up in, uh, two more items.
Okay, cool. I just wanna say, I think that professionalism is really, really important. Um, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this and it looks like some of my original concerns were addressed. Um, and I greatly appreciate that. I think, um, I think as long as we're responsible as a board in how we look at this and even handed with how we enforce it. Um, I don't think it'll be a problem. Uh, anything can be a problem if we're not being reasonable. I think there is kind of a key note there, even under existing practices, we could deal with these things. Um, by, you know, just reasonably applying it, but it does help to have it spelled out. And so I, I, I am, uh, cautiously in support of it.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Can I speak briefly?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I, I would like to, to commend Mr. Martin's, um, you know, point. And I, I just add that, uh, this is not intended to target anyone. This is intended to make business proceed smoothly. Um, if there are issues, they need to be addressed and no one is, is exempt. Um. Th- this is designed to make sure that we don't end up in issues where, like I said, uh. You know, I went post-to-post with the Investigatory Committee with Karen and Harlow. And it wasted a lot of time. And we don't have that time anymore. And I would prefer that not to happen again. So that's where I'm coming from. And I, you know, I've, I have done, eh, my level best to make sure that we have come up with the, the, the best policy. To make sure that doesn't happen again. If there are people that are acting out, that are not acting in good faith. There is a process now and we will be able to address it. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Mr. Bost?
Uh, yes, I was, uh, also a member of this committee. Uh, I did. Uh, didn't speak much on it, uh, during the deliberations, but, uh, this committee put a lot of, uh, time and work and did their due diligence. So I will, uh, speak in favor. Thank you.
Mr. Chatterton?
Uh, yes, I, uh. Like, I think what I've seen for the most part from these rules, um. I think that this is a great change. I believe this committee has been using excuses to avoid consideration of the rules for conduct that already exists in our parliamentary authorities. Um, and this has been used as an excuse to justify allowance of terrible behavior by members of this board. So I'm very glad to see that we are formally adopting something, so there no longer be any dancing around those, uh. Basic principles of human respect as we heard about so extensively in the Great Speech at our Grand Rapids meeting. So I look forward to seeing hopefully finally some improved behavior now that we will be adopting something formally, even though. None of these roles should be taken as novel or. Um, anything like that, that, uh, would easily be enforceable under our existing rules and our parliamentary authority. I will be supporting this motion.
All right, going once, going twice, going three times. I'm gonna go out on a limb here. Uh, is there any objection to adopting this, these policy manual amendments? Going once, going twice, going three times?
As a point of parliamentary inquiry, who did the, who seconded Mr. McGee's motion?
Oh, good question. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, motion passes. Saves us about twenty minutes. Good job, team. All right. Next up on the docket is Convention Oversight Committee Report and Update. Mr. Ford, fifteen minutes.
Absolutely. If you give me just a moment here. I'm gonna move that this be put into executive session, as is our tradition with this.
I object to that.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. There is objection. Uh, would you like to debate on whether or not to enter into executive session?
It's our point, point of personal, or sorry, point of part, excuse me, point of parliamentary inquiry. What's the reason for executive session?
Oh, yeah, we do need a reason to enter executive session, Mr. Ford.
Sure, uh, we're gonna discuss a number of things, including internal pricing. Uh, we're gonna be talking about potential speakers. We're gonna talk about political strategy. Um, so those typically over the years have been held at executive sessions.
I hate to be a douche and bag, but I, I don't believe that, um, pricing and speakers would fall under executive session, although obviously political strategy would. So, um, I'm not sure about how we go about that.
Actually, we're under a non-disclosure agreement with pricing. With the hotels, when the venue. That's why we traditionally done this. It's, um, you know, why we, uh, to Stephen's credit, he organized a meeting in front of folks that we're gonna do again, where we went into quite depth. Great deal of depth Thursday evening, um, about the convention. But again, we do have legal constraints.
Uh, Mr. Secretary?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would oppose going into executive session. Last time Mr. Ford, uh, went into executive session in Grand Rapids, I was told by every LNC member that I spoke to, I think there were about seven of them. That told me that nothing that was spoken about in Grand Rapids during the convention portion was executive session stuff. Uh, and I have a few questions for Mr. Ford regarding convention because I have a lot of concerns and I think that it would behoove the membership to know where we're at with convention.
Ah, okay, so this is internal politics writ large. Okay. Um, well, I'm gonna call for a vote. If it goes in, into public, I'll just have to refrain from talking about the hotel contract. And I would prefer to go over the hotel contract with folks, but. You know, we went through this last week, Adrian, let the, let the attacks begin.
All right, we're gonna go ahead, uh, Mr. Martin.
Just a really brief thing. I so oppose secrecy and I hate how much it is overused in politics. It's so convenient to just hide things from people. And I, I absolutely oppose it. That said, when we're under an NDA and we're trying to make plans for something like a convention. In the future, it does make absolute sense why some of those discussions should be private. And I think it's kind of ridiculous. That we're having to debate for the ability to, to do that. I understand and I'm okay with having a lot of this conversation in public. To me, it, it. It doesn't really matter, except where we might have contractual obligations and we kind of do need to be able to do that business. So. Um, executive session is narrow for that reason. I think this appropriately falls under that narrow exception of executive session, why we have it, right? Um, though again, I'm, I prefer transparency as radically as possible. So anyway, I'll, you'll, thank you.
Mr. Redpath?
I think Mr. Ford's request is reasonable. My question is, uh, we already are down to eleven thirty-eight to go on this item. Is this executive session going to be untimed?
Uh, no, I, 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 do you want me to answer that?
Sure, go ahead.
I, I'm looking to work this. I'd be already well into my presentation if it wasn't for this question, reasonable question, so I'm happy to proceed. I will be looking to work through this as quickly as possible because I've spent a lot of time on the phone. With, oh, answering a lot of questions this week and I'll be happy to continue to do so. And I'll be happy to answer any question whatsoever in executive session that the board has.
Okay, so I, I take, uh, so I take this to be, and that's okay. I just wanted to know. So this would be an untimed executive session and thank, thank you.
All right. I'll accept a friend, a friendly amendment to keep it to fifteen minutes. I think that was the original.
We can always extend time in executive session if we need to.
Right.
So we'll, we'll. If, if we have to, we'll try to get to fifteen minutes. Um, all in favor of entering executive session to discuss the COC report, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, no, seven. All right, all opposed? Mr. Ford, your hand is still raised?
Uh, raise my hand.
All right, consider Jonathan McGee's hand raised. It's one, two, three, four, five. All right, motion, just double check, one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, we are going into executive session. So, Mr. Secretary, if you could. Open the wormhole and get us into exec sesh and we can. Get this knocked out.
So I will abstain from going into executive session for reasons previously stated. Mr. Chatterton and Mr. Martin have both broken their NDAs, so I found that part of the debate humorous.
Objection, when did I break mine?
Uh, and so I will go ahead and. Move everyone else into.
Court of order, court of order.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. I should have a chance to.
Um. I asked the member to be called of order for making slanderous and unsubstantiated, some unsubstantiated accusations that have not been demonstrated and has been continually brought up. So I would like to see Mr. Malagon specifically called to order for this repeated abusive behavior.
Mr. Chair, I'll just remind the LNC as well as.
Actually, actually, technically, technically, uh, uh, considering the passage of the Ethics Committee report. Mr. Malagon should be called to order. However, um, I will also not be going into executive session.
I just really quickly wanted to remind everyone that I did actually provide, provide proof privately to the LNC that, uh, that this had already happened. So there's nothing.
Or secrecy, nothing proven. That would require disciplinary proceeding.
All right, all right, let's, let's get into executive session. I ask everybody to please respect each other. Mr. Malagon included in that. However, uh, he is free to state his reasoning for not entering into executive session. But if there are any accusatory or, uh, anything that could be seen as defaming another member, I would not like that added into the minutes. We want to keep those neutral.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, until a leak has been demonstrated and shown through a disciplinary action, it is slanderous of Mr. Malagon to continue to make such an assertion.
Technically, he just made an assertion that he would not like to go into executive session.
Uh, he did not. No, he stated the reason why was because myself and this.
Would he like to, what do you, what do you?
Mr. Chair, the breakout room is open for all those to join. Just go ahead and join the room. I will stay out here.
The secretary is apparently mute. Has meeting control.
I'm glad to see that the, uh, ethics policy is being. And we won't be allowed to speak and.
All LNC members, please join the breakout room for executive session. Thank you.
Why don't you bring that accusation for? It's kind of cowardly to keep muting me. But I see that doesn't.
All right, I believe all members are in. Um, Miss, Mr. McGee. Opted out as well.
It's like, to be, to be fair, you muted me too. It's not like, oh, no, it's just Mr. Martin. It's like, no, I, it's like, no, you absolutely muted the shit out of me. I'm just like, what? Fuck you two. But no, you, you muted me too.
I'm going to.
There, there's a mute all, uh, mute all option.
Oh, no, oh, no, oh, no. Uh, Malagon muted the shit out of me.
I'm going to stop the recording for right now, or pause it, rather.
The recording has stopped.
Uh, where is the mute? Mr. Ruse, where is the mute all function?
Oh, I'm not sure Mr. Ruse would know that one.
Well, I'm on my desktop, uh, otherwise it pointed out to you.
Uh, I wish I could, I'm gonna try to figure that out.
Absolutely love when I hear region representatives and other representatives saying the quiet part out loud. We've had so much of that tonight. Um, blows my fucking mind.
Oh, you have no idea.
I, I served on, on the LNC for three terms. I have every idea. I.
That's fair, that's fair, that's fair. Okay, okay.
There was a state chair and a candidate and worked three presidential campaigns and all of that shit.
Oh, shit, no, you're Adams. I, I, I apologize.
Yeah, but tonight.
So much.
Like, that was fucking ridiculous.
I, I respect.
I don't have the vote, so I'm gonna post, move to postpone, like. What the shit?
I know, right? I, 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 I respect, I respect everything here. I'm just like, no, it, 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 you know, things are crazy, you know?
I like when the quiet part is said out loud. I, I think.
I'm just gonna tell you, all the times that I didn't have the votes, I was never gonna fucking say that. I was gonna walk into that meeting, acting like I had the votes, still trying to get the votes. I wasn't gonna throw myself under the bus.
Right? We used to be a proper country. What happened? Oh, man.
Well, you know what the really funny part is, is that, I mean, the Ethics Committee report just passed, so now there's actually no grounds to remove Adrian.
I mean, uh, for me, and I don't know.
There's no, no, there's literally no grounds. Like, you didn't. There's no, no, there's literally no grounds. Like, they didn't even read the, they didn't, they didn't even read it.
Oh, look, I lived through some of the terms with, with problematic people. Um, go back and look at the boards I sat on. Uh, we were still trying to put our focus not, uh, which I don't know for sure, or let me preface this, was the right move. Um, but we were certainly trying to focus on, you know, how do we expand our funding, which I think we were very successful at. Um, how do we implement new programs? How do we hire an HR company for the first time in the history of the party, which we also did? Um, we tried to not focus on the other shit, even though it absolutely, you know, made you gray and gave you a stress rash. Um.
Oh, no, I know all about the stress rash. Like, I'm on prednisone right now. Like, I know, I'm on prednisone right now because of all.
It's a real thing.
Oh, no, I get it.
I mean, we had a Gray Rock support group, um, that met weekly, uh, members of the, of the board that just needed to go, hey, how, you know, how much weed are you smoking this week and what strand is it and where do I get it? Because I can't deal right now. Um.
Uh, if only, if only.
Can I make a request?
Uh, JJ, absolutely, like, what do you got?
First of all, I'm going to point out something that you were wrong on something. I'm going to point, I'm going to call you out on this, Jonathan.
Okay, okay, call me out, call me out.
I am. Both Mr. Chatterton and Mr. Malagon have done, uh, disciplinary action in their states. I know this.
So I think that's up to their states, though. That's not up to the board.
JJ, so that one, I missed that.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I didn't hear that either. And honestly, I want to hear, I, I honestly, I want JJ to call me out, because I respect him too much to. Yeah, no, 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 no. If, if I did something wrong, I want to hear it.
Yeah, they, they both, they both did a lot of work on that, because I know, because I worked with them on it. And, uh, excuse me, they both are familiar with the, uh, process. Um, the second thing is, and it's not a request for me, it's for Sam Bowler.
Yes, uh, I, I talked about that.
Yes, he is down here waiting patiently to hear.
Not, to not be chair of the HPC.
Yeah. Um, would it be?
And I try, I tried to get that removed from the agenda. It was shot down. I think maybe at this point, I think at this point, maybe we can still get it done.
Okay, that, that's not, that wasn't the issue. I was wondering if you're, if it's going to be on the agenda, could you, could somebody move to take it out of order so that he does not have to sit here in a hot suit and tie like he normally does?
I will do, will do, done, done.
Uh, meeting.
By the way, by the way, you do realize I am here, sitting here in a certain tie, just because you can't see me.
Oh, okay.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand. Are you saying that Mr. Bowler's in a hot suit and tie, like he looks hot, as in he's a strapping?
Actually, actually, he does. See, 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 there we go.
I mean, he is a dapper guy.
Wait, we, we do it better in Alabama. We just do. That's just how it works.
You know, historically, that hasn't been the case. I just want to point.
Well, you know what?
Just like to point out, we are the number one state affiliate, alphabetically.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Done.
Um, well, Mr. Bowler turns his camera on and reminds me of my own inadequacies. Love it, love it. Uh.
Hey, man, you, you guys have all seen me since.
His beard is better too.
That's true.
All right, JJ, you know. Uh, that's out of order.
Um, I'm sorry, Alabama's just winning.
First of all, this isn't, this is.
Alabama is just winning right now. Adrian, just, just concede. Alabama is just winning. Cause you've seen me. You, you know, you know, you know, it's par for the course. Okay, just, just, just resign. You, you, you know, this is par for the course. This is Alabama. We dress nice. We're very good. We're well spoken.
Uh, and you are first alphabetically.
There we go. So what we will.
Uh, you guys seeing Elmo on Twitter right now? That's pretty crazy, right?
Oh, you guys are back?
That's quick.
No, I think I accidentally, I accidentally left somehow, somewhere.
Accidentally.
You want to go back in?
Yeah, right.
No, seriously.
No, 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 it's, it's good. It's okay. It's cool.
Mr. Thompson, would you wish to go back in?
I, I would not wish to.
I can't blame you.
Oh, that's too funny.
But I will, I will say for the record, Alabama has just outclassed everyone.
Well, it's a shame I'm not going to have my questions answered, but that's what it is, I suppose.
Alabama has, uh, has outclassed everyone and we all knew it was going to happen.
Easy there, easy there, Alabama.
There we go. See, see, uh, it, it started. You can't stop it.
We can.
I almost suddenly talking about Mises. Look at that.
Who's talking about what?
Uh, Elmo account got hacked.
Whose account?
Wait a minute, you said Elmo got hacked and now they're talking like Mises? That's what you just said?
All right now, all right now.
Have you, uh, have, I'm guessing Adrian, you haven't seen the Elmo tweets.
No, I have no idea what's going on.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you a screenshot right now. I cannot, I cannot read them on this, because I've, I, I can do it in another, another place. But.
Um, Rob's here, so like, no, let's do it, let's do this.
We are not being recorded right now, just to be clear, and I don't.
Oh, so you want me to read them?
Yes, absolutely.
That is an option that you.
All right, all right, I'll do it, I'll do it. But just for the record, this is Elmo saying these words, not me. First tweet, kill all Jews, end quote.
No way, are you serious?
Okay, okay, cancel, cancel. You're, you're, you're canceled immediately. No, I'm.
All right, second tweet. Second tweet, are you ready? Second tweet, release the files, Donald Trump, child fucker, all caps, okay? End of second tweet.
Holy shit. Okay, wow.
All right, last one. The last one, uh, this is the one that got it pulled down, because it's gone now. You can't find it publicly. Look at all these people jumping and, uh, here we go. Again, for the new people that just joined, this is not me saying this. This is the official Elmo Twitter account. This is what it said moments ago. Quote, Elmo says all Jews should die. Fuck Jews. Donald Trump is Netanyahu's puppet because he's in the Epstein files. Jews controlled the world and need to be exterminated. End quote.
Okay, just remember this because the party is recording this, as a being hundreds of other people aren't recording this, so.
I don't care about them. Yeah.
Wow, Elmo, uh.
Elmo goes hard.
Elmo has been taken over by, by New Hampshire.
Uh, no, it sounds like it.
I'm actually surprised it took that long for someone to.
Elmo is now Jeremy Kaufman.
I mean, there's always been a resemblance.
That's fair, that's fair, that's fair.
Here you go. I sent you the, uh, screenshots for your, uh, for your records there, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you so much.
Jeremy Kaufman is now Elmo.
I'll make sure to archive appropriately.
You're welcome.
Wow.
I should have saved it for the after hours. That would have been the smarter thing to do.
I don't know. I actually, I think, uh, given, given all the circumstances, I think this is appropriate.
Well, Elmo, uh, El, Elmo may still have some more tweets to go before, uh, before they, they get them, uh.
Hey, man, Jeremy Kaufman ain't dead.
They got him already.
Jeremy Kaufman ain't dead. He, I'm sure something's going to be said before the meeting's over.
It's, uh, that's wild. That's absolutely wild.
He ain't tickling nobody now.
The crazier part would be if he hadn't actually gotten hacked.
Right.
Yeah, if it was just Elmo, it's just how he is now.
Elmo knows where you live.
Yeah. We just gotta. We just got a, a comment here. Elmo wasn't hacked. He just forgot to use his alt account. So he's fired now.
Exactly.
Man, I wonder, so if that's Elmo, I wonder what Oscar the Grouch is saying these days, uh.
Oh, you don't want to know. No, you don't want to know. Trust me, you don't want to know.
Oscar, Oscar.
No, you're still drinking Scotch. You don't want to know.
Uh, no, it's actually, uh, I think I'm, it's a bourbon right now.
Why would you do, why would you do that? Why would you do that?
Well, in, in.
Traitor, traitor, you are a traitor.
Southerners here on the call, you know, Mr. Bowler, Mr. McGee, I'm sure there are others that I'm missing.
I'm drinking Highland Park.
I'm drinking, is it tin cup? Tin cup. I like it. So it's a decent bourbon.
You're, you're drinking bourbon and not Scotch. I am offended, I'm, I am offended.
I save Scotch for.
I joined Mr. McGee's offense.
Scotch is for old men.
Oh, 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 can it?
And what, oh, and plantation owners, yes.
I have this Scotch.
Oh, and, and plantation owners. Okay, okay, now the bias is out. Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. I'm not allowed to have a private business.
We, we no longer support, uh, private property or private businesses. That is the new.
Okay, okay, cool. I thought we was Libertarian Party, but apparently not.
That platform change just.
It's, it, it, it just, it just died while, while they, while all the, all the crazy people are in executive session.
Well, who has, uh, we have some LNC members out here. We have, uh, any questions for LNC members, uh, any general, anything? Anything for us while we, while we wait to get back?
Yeah, can, can we get quorum out here?
You might have quorum out here.
We actually.
Right, right.
We'll, we'll tell them what happened when they come out of executive session.
Three, four. I think I saw Dassing. I don't know if he went into exec, he just came in, but, um, I think we're dangerously close to quorum actually out here. That's really funny. Well, so, so orders of the day.
I shall ask a question.
Yes, Mr. Phillies.
Pray tell, do you happen to know what the current party membership is?
Um, the last one.
They haven't seen the report either, George.
I haven't, I haven't seen the report. The last one that was out was the last one I saw. Uh, I haven't seen one since.
Okay.
But, um, I know we've had. Let me see, actually, let me just double check. Put my email and the membership report.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just gonna say it. No, 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 Hector, 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 no, 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 you first.
April is the last one that I have and it's.
I am curious how many people have, uh, have not re-upped their, uh, their sustaining membership dues that went, that's served the delegates at the national convention.
Well, me, but I'm a lifetime, so.
Exactly, and I've always been a lifetime member too.
We are at, as of April twenty twenty-five, that's the last report that I have. We have, uh, total membership is two hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seven, sustaining members is nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four. Lifetime members is three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven.
Only because they can't revoke it or get a refund and we don't necessarily track when they die. I would argue that number's probably not a correct reflection.
Well, this is.
I, I, no, no, I, I would absolutely agree with Ms. Adams.
Yeah, no, uh, it is definitely not a current reflection. This is from April. Uh, not sure where the.
I mean, it's probably not correct for April either, Mr. Malagon.
Well, right, I mean.
Well, I mean, uh, fair, but I mean, it's not really saying much.
Adrian, I much appreciate your going to the trouble of finding that.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, there is in the treasurer's report a graph to which I took a micrometer caliper, which is good to a couple, three pixels, and it appeared we were around ninety-four hundred.
God bless you, Mr. Phillies.
Ninety, you said ninety-four hundred?
Yes, that ninety-four hundred is not very accurate.
Well, I mean, that's fair, but God bless you, Mr. Phillies, for taking that, that, that painstaking exaction.
I mean, if you want that, uh, even semi-accurate estimate of the number, what choice did he really have since reports haven't gone out?
I mean, it's fair. I mean, again, you're absolutely fair, absolutely.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, as a minor note, the graph, um, one of the graphs, which might have been more useful, has the unfortunate feature that it's generated from a spreadsheet and cuts off below its ten thousand. So when the membership went under ten thousand, the bar graphs disappear, the bars disappear from the graph.
What I will do right now, Mr. Phillies, is I will email the XD and ask her, um, we can produce a more recent report.
Thank you. Hopefully it will show an increase.
Well, uh, I, I mean, we can hope. I, I'm kind of with.
That's, that's very, that is very optimist.
Yeah, hopefully I won the lottery this week. I, I didn't, but I'll continue to hope.
As people are being polite, I will try to be positive.
I know, that is very much appreciated. As, as someone that, you know, just a few months ago was very much against you. I'm just like, oh, wait, I was the idiot.
George knows where all the bodies are buried.
No, Jonathan, you're a sensible person and people occasionally make the best decision they can based on the facts they have. But sometimes more facts help.
They generally do, they generally do.
Mind you, if someone asked me to put money on there being an increase, I would be hesitant.
Well, I mean, I would maybe ask you for that in the future if things are more secure.
That would take a whole lot of changes. I mean, this isn't a boat with holes in it. This is the door from Titanic.
I know, but you know, if you take a door and replace it with something that's just, you know, steel, you know, I, sometimes you can do that. But yeah, I agree. This is going to take a little bit. It's going to be a little bit of a transition.
As long as we are the Titanic before rather than after it broken half.
Either way, the gender is the same though, right, George? So I'm not sure.
Well, to be fair, I mean, it's, it's breaking in half. It depends on what the four and the aft is. I mean, we're not at the four or the aft. Let's, let's, let's wait and see what happens.
So, Mr. Phillies, I just did send an email to the, uh, to the XD. Uh, so when I have an answer for you, I can, uh, well, hopefully that will.
Yeah, like, and, and I can confirm that, like, he's not just blowing smoke up your ass.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Any other inquiries?
Yeah, do you know when fifteen minutes will have been up?
I think it's already up, but I'm.
Ten minutes ago, please, ten minutes ago.
Come on, you know how reason one goes, you know, it, they're just going to extend and, you know, I, you know, I love Pat Ford, but he can talk and talk and talk and talk and talk. And I may, and I, and I may, and I may even agree with him. But he can talk and talk and talk and talk. So I don't, I don't expect this to drop out anytime soon.
Experience, though, um, at this point in the planning process, it would be reasonable for the report to be, to take longer than five minutes.
No, I, and I agree, I agree completely.
Yeah, no, that, that's reasonable, but that's not what was.
Yeah, right, right. No, exactly. No, I, I, exactly. I think Mr. Thompson understands completely. I think Mr. Thompson has hit the nail on the head.
I, I think what we need to do is we need to, we need to hire, um, an auctioneer to deliver the report.
I mean, I think it's important that the board understands the report. I mean, you could just email the report to the board prior.
That, that is an option.
Three days prior and say, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them in order to shorten our discussion time at the meeting. Um, we need to do that.
A literate board.
Well, to, to be fair to Mr. Ford, I will.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure how you fix that, Thompson.
I, I will say that I received a report, a written report, um, well, let me rephrase. I received a link to a report that I did not have access to, and I requested access a few times and it was never given to me. So it's not uploaded in the OneNote, but, uh, there is in the ether somewhere, a COC report.
No, no, but, but, but if, if we need an auctioneer, I can, I can totally do that.
I can also say there may be times, um, from COC purview, that executive session makes really good sense for a successful convention that may not be covered in the policy manual. Um, sometimes premature announcement of speakers does not help to build, um, purchase excitement around tickets. Um, sometimes things like that, that would be strategic necessarily for the convention, but not necessarily political strategy, might be something for you guys to think about for a PM manual, um, amendment moving forward. Um, and oftentimes contracts are, you know, that's a legal matter, so it's already covered.
No, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, I was, uh, the COC chair for about six months last term, uh, before, you know, obvious issues. But I, I will say, I agree with all of that, uh, but I don't believe that that's what's being discussed in executive session at the moment. If.
Well, uh, uh, really, our executive session is just, it's the same as the public session, but delayed by like two days.
I would love to see members of the.
Two days? That is optimistic.
Well, I, I, I'm joining in with Mr. Phillies in my optimism.
I think when an executive session runs afoul of rules of the executive session, it's imperative that members of the board that are present call that.
Yeah, yeah.
Call it out and leave and publicly say, I have left because we ran afoul of executive session.
Well, speaking of which, Ms. Hayes.
I'm out here. I mean, just like, at one point, I was, I, no, 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 keep in mind here. I, you know, just what, eight months ago, I was the ringleader prosecuting Karen Ann Harlow, and here I am. Like, really? No, no, I will admit when I am wrong.
Five. Mr. Nana has joined us now. We have like six LNC members out here that have left executive session. Mr. Bones enjoying some coffee. Wants us all to know.
Oh, by the way, Mr. Phillies, you know, I know there are a lot of people that, you know, are calling for the LNC to pursue reparations from Ms. Bacardo. I understand you've got a decent amount of cash. Would you be willing to, you know, pro bono fund us being able to claw back some of that cash?
While it is assuredly true that I am one of the wealthier members in the LNC, I believe it is correct that a careful examination of the record and cash transfers will make clear that there is vastly more than enough money that transferred from various Kennedy funds in the direction of that address, that someone would be willing to take it without being paid in advance. That is the actual amount transferred, other than the 50,000 or whatever the number is. The LNC transferred that may or may not have been transferred lawfully or properly. There was also about, depending on which source you believe, between three quarters of a million and a million and a quarter from various Kennedy funds that moved in the right general direction, though it's not clear exactly where they went.
So it's what I'm hearing is that we can talk more offline about pursuing this.
You would want to talk, well, this is actually a legitimate topic for executive session.
No, which is why I'm not engaging in further conversation publicly.
Also, in order to pursue criminal charges, an actual current member of.
I am not suggesting criminal charges whatsoever. I just want that for the record. I am not, no, no, I, no, no, that is not what I am.
I just want all the members that they can call and file a complaint to understand that they cannot. That's not gonna be given any legitimate look.
And I agree. But I'm just like, it sounds like there's talk about, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe there's a way we can get some more money for the LNC and move forward.
Having once upon a time filed a criminal complaint with the FEC, the first sentence of which it was, as required by the rules at the time, this is a criminal complaint. I can assure you that the FEC did listen to contrary to what Ms. Adams.
Mr. Nakala is out of executive session. I think things are oncoming.
It's like Groundhog Day. You see the chair, we're going back to regular session, so.
That was a long 15 minutes, Mr. Chair. And as we are ready to commence, I can start the recording again. Let me see how we are doing with the room. It appears that only Mr. Redpath and Mr. Ford are still in there.
I mean, the latter is not really surprising.
Uh, yeah.
In the future, Mr. Malagon, mute all buttons under host controls, what else?
Under host controls?
Free daddy.
Well, good thing I did not start the recording. I still don't see it. Interesting.
I mean, we'll wait.
Uh, well, hopefully we won't need it too much. I'll just have to keep doing it individually. Um, okay, I can, it looks like everyone is out. I will resume the recording in just a moment.
This meeting is being recorded.
All right, we are back. It is 8:16 PM, July 13, 2025. We are back in regular session. We're gonna be moving on to new business with previous notice. Item number one is motion to ratify International Alliance of Libertarian Parties Constitution. I am the mover. If Mr. Paul Dar wants to take a mic and if there's a second, I will.
Second.
My motion. All right, we got a motion and a second. I'm assuming Mr. Dar's in control of the of the hammer. And what this is, is the Libertarian Party has been a member of the IALP since 2015. So for 10 years, we've been a part of the IALP. They're the International Alliance of Libertarian Parties. They have members in Russia, Venezuela, of course, Argentina, the United States, UK. Uruguay just opened up a new party, et cetera, et cetera. So through Europe, Asia, and the rest of the world. And what I've been speaking with them about is actually forming a more official IALP. And so what they want to do is move their headquarters to the United States, incorporate in the United States, and create a more formal body that members can vote in. So the USLP would of course be a member. This is the draft constitution, so we'd be ratifying this as an LNC. And if and when they have their general assembly, which may be in Argentina, maybe in Argentina by Zoom and in person, we'll see. Sometime later this year, we would cast our vote for this version of the constitution. So that's all this is. And I don't know if anybody here that's been working with me on the team, talking to the IALP as somewhat liaisons and have helped work on this document, if they want to speak, Kyle or Pierre or Amanda.
Sure, we're around.
Okay.
Amanda should be in the waiting room, I think.
I do not see anyone in the waiting room at this time.
Uh, she's hopping back in.
Well, Kyle, you're here, so.
Sure. So Pierre can't be here, can't be here tonight, and is relying on us to kind of pitch everything. The IALP was pretty well kicked off with the idea that we, we being the American Libertarian Party, are the model by which the world libertarian movement should be modeled from. I know that that's a double there, but we are trying to get this back going, and with everything that's going well for the Libertarian Party, which I realize that we're in the rebuilding phase, everything else. The IALP wants to move here and wants us to be able to give guidance to them, and they want to be able to help us in any way they can. And so this is effectively what we are going for here. This is, you know, the portion obviously for the LNC to go over. We worked with Pierre and the IALP to make a new, everything, the Declaration of Principles, the, like, the new. Sorry, I was, I was thinking this was gonna be a little bit later, so I got a new constitution and everything. It's kind of a complete overhaul. The idea is, you know, that we'd be able to get advice and work directly with some of the Argentinean libertarians. We can help give advice to, you know, some of the ones in the UK who are struggling even worse than we are.
And, sorry, that part of me, apologies, but Argentine.
Sorry.
It's Argentine.
Okay, Argentine, my mistake.
Point of information, Kyle.
Yeah.
Will the French libertarians be a part of this?
Um, I mean, you can argue that Pierre is a French libertarian, but he has at this point moved his way over to the GMF, Gershi Group with Georgia, and so, you know.
I don't know, man.
I mean, you know, the French libertarians at this point are fighting with Macron and everybody else, so it's it's kind of a whole world thing. And we have the ability to get some global press on us, which can be really good for us, and there's very little that we have to go out of our way to do or spend on this. If Pat's got a question, I'll gladly answer it.
The, the serious question, particularly given the presence of the Irish Libertarian Party, can they actually give us advice, please?
Yes, absolutely.
The Argentine's level of national electoral success is quite significant, so I would love to hear more from them.
Yeah, that's exactly the idea, that we'd be able to send representatives to meetings, they'd be able to send representatives to us. We could share information and what strategies have worked. Where? Like, this is just another way for us to get some great data. This is another way for us to be able to further the movement and get more members in without us having to really spend anything. It's, there's, and from my perspective, there's pretty much only positives. Mr. Bost.
Uh, yes, so is there any any cost to join in? I haven't fully gone through this constitution, but there's no, this is just, this is more like a bylaws than a, than say a platform. There's no platform planks in here. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I see it does say that it's a free association of sovereign parties that retain full independence. So, so as you say, this is, this is a means to cooperate, not a, not a a commitment or requirement to do any particular thing.
Exactly.
It's the opposite of the World Health Organization membership proposal, where they're like an international body that controls the states. This is a completely voluntary sovereign, like, I'll cast my vote, but I don't have to agree with you or disagree with you. You can do your own thing.
Mr. Martin has his hand up. I really love this idea, and I like where this can go, so I'm not trying to oppose it, but I do have a couple of questions. One would be, if there's a huge amount of, like, the purpose is to promote the principles expressed in the declaration. And one question would be, how much are those principles, are any of them at variance with other members? And in that case, would this group engage in activism to try to change those principles in its constituent parties? And then another question would be, with the mutability of it, it seems like it's it's got a pretty good mechanism to not be super changeable, but it is changeable. And the question would be, if we adopted this, is it possible that that some of these provisions could change in a way that could become a problem? And otherwise, I really love this, and I'd love to see us do something like this. Finally, I guess, is another question is about legwork, right? Like, the manpower to bring on a whole nother large-scale libertarian organization. This could be great. Don't get me wrong, there's a lot of people in the international libertarian movement who really could reinforce what we're doing. And I know I've got some of them out here in Hawaii, and they're great, so I'd love to see how this could work. And I guess that kind of concludes my list of thoughts on it.
I don't know if Kyle knows whether he's not muted on Zoom, but anyway. Yes, so I didn't hear the first question that you, I rather, I had trouble hearing the first question you asked, because we have a little bit of feedback. But as to the, you know, the mutability, it is of course always possible that something could be changed that would, that we would object to, but there is always the ability to withdraw. If we don't agree with any principles, there is a statement of principles. I think, hopefully, you've been able to look that over. I don't find anything in there objectionable in the least. If that were to change in some way that we didn't agree with, we would always retain the capacity to step back.
Thank you for clarifying. My first question was kind of about whether or not if there's a variance between member states and the organization, since it's, one of its purposes is to promote its its views, basically. If they're at variance with a member state, would that require the organization to try to lobby to change the member state to be in you know, line with the IALP, or is it talking mainly about, like, that's kind of my question. Yeah, it might answer itself. I'm not sure, but that would be one thing that I would just be a little curious about.
Sure, so that makes sense. The member states and organizations are different. Currently, there are not a ton of member states because this has been reconstituted, right? So there would need to be a process of moving back in some of the former states, or sorry, former members, as well as the fact that there are some organizations internationally that are not formally constituted as parties, right? There are a lot of sort of underground libertarian groups. That's what that's in reference to. There would always be a desire to make sure that these organizations are as aligned with our principles as possible, and to, you know, to take the utmost care in that respect. So to answer your question, there is a difference, although currently we plan to add more member states since this has been reconstituted, and that's gonna be a fairly straightforward process.
May I ask one more thing? Is this different than the other international libertarian organization? Are we talking about a rebranding, or are we talking about a distinct entity?
A reconstitution.
Yes, so there's a former, or there is an International Alliance of Libertarian Parties that is a reconstitution of the one that was formed in 2015. There are other international libertarian organizations, but those are separate.
Thank you. I believe Mr. McGee has his hand up for you.
Thank you. What I would like to say is, I think this is a good framework, and at this point, I would like to call the question.
All right, if, if we are all good to go then, and there's no more questions, I just want to say that it's a really cool effort. It's really interesting to see what's going on in the international community, and I'm very pleased we can move forward on this. So if there's no more hands up, we can move on to a vote. Mr. Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bost. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, who was the second?
Oh.
I second it. Meredith seconds it.
All right, Mr. Bost.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chatterton?
Pass, please.
Mr. Dar?
Yes.
I saw Mr. Dassing come back in the room. Mr. Dassing?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Uh, yay.
Ms. Hayes?
Yay, I like that. I'm gonna do yay. It's my own.
Mr. Martin?
Pass.
I will vote aye. Mr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, but no French.
Mr. Watkins?
abstain.
Uh, Missina Skavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
I abstain.
Okay, Mr. Chatterton.
Vote no.
Mr. Chair, the vote is 11 to 2 to 2 to 0. Do you wish to cast a vote?
Yeah, I'll vote yes on this one.
All right, motion passes. Mr. Thompson, you had your hand raised?
Uh, hey, I had a point of information passed along to me. Could we get a, could we look at the vote total for Mr. Martin's motion to reorder the agenda, please, since there was confusion on that?
Certainly, just one moment.
Was that my proposal, Mr. Thompson, that you're referring, to move the three items?
It was just scroll past. I called it. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Oh, this one, yeah.
All right. All right, next item is item B, motion to form an investigatory committee. Mr. Chatterton is the mover. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chatterton, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So I don't know that there needs to be a whole lot said. I think most of Mr. Malagon's misconduct has occurred publicly. This has also capped off, I think, with a recent exchange with public emails that have been reported on about poor handling of complaints of sexual harassment without proper investigation. Um, we've seen extensive abusive behaviors on the board um, over the entirety of Mr. Malagon's tenure. Um, as I stated earlier, with the adoption of the ethics um proposal, our rules and procedures absolutely have basic um requirements for respect among board members. Um, and I think it would go without saying and in common sense in line with the presentation given to us about human respect by one of our large donors to the party at the recent Grand Rapids meeting, that this behavior is simply unacceptable and cannot be tolerated in any professional environment, let alone on a board. We've seen these same comments from our consultant that we've hired and paid a great deal of money. And we even heard from her in the Grand Rapids meeting, when I asked a question about members who continually conduct these behaviors, who do not respond to warnings, who continue to repeat the same things um, over and over again, that at some point it has to reach an end where you say, Mr. Malagon, this is not working out and it is time for you to be done on the LNC.
For the record, that uh, sexual harassment complaint was baseless and I ruled it as such. Uh, Mr. McGee, then Mr. Martin. Mr. McGee.
So um, I, well, I respectfully agree that um, you know, Mr. Chatterton does actually have a point. However, um, we literally just passed the Ethics Committee Report, which had a proviso which basically reset the clock on all such provisions. Um, so this is technically not even in order. Um, based upon the language of the Ethics Committee Report. Um, I, I guess I, you know, uh, some people chose not to read the report. So I would ask that the chair rule this entire motion out of order.
Let me see here. Can you say exactly what language you're referring to?
Um, number one is the first paragraph, which replaces the entire paragraph on harassment. And then the proviso, which basically states that unless you can prove that there is gross fiduciary violation of duty, violation of fiduciary duty, it's not in order. I mean, that's, that's, that's right there in the language.
Are you speaking about the proviso at the end of the document?
I'm speaking both the proviso at the end of the document and the language at the end of the first paragraph.
That is not the effect of the language.
That is the effect of the language, Mr. Martin.
Both kind of section details here that is sort of.
You passed it.
The purpose is.
May I respond, Mr. Chair?
Um, who's speaking?
Mr. Martin.
No, so, Mr. Chair, I.
Hold on one second.
Muting him while you make a ruling without interruption.
This is, this is not in order.
This motion is not raised under the grounds of the uh.
Uh, Mr. McGee, can you say exactly which uh, which clause? Uh, I'm just combing through it. I'm trying to figure out.
There's, there's, there's two different clauses. Technically, there's the one at the very end of the first paragraph. And then there's the one in the actual pre- proviso and the very last one. And they both say the same thing. Basically, this is out of order.
So.
This is, this has been, this has been adopted. This has been adopted. It's out of order.
I filed the ethics complaint against.
Mr. McGee is referring to this section right here.
I have a right to speak up. I did.
Please raise your hand and wait to be recognized for your turn to speak.
So I believe he's referring to the last sentence there. The current section one point zero seven point four should be stricken from the LNC policy manual and revised to be put into the employee manual, keeping the substance but making it applicable to staff and that instruction is part of this proposal if passed.
By the way, that was added by uh, Karen Anne Harlowes, not me.
And the proviso at the end that Mr. McGee is referring to is with the exception of gross violations of fiduciary duty, criminal acts or cases where an investigatory committee has not returned a final report, the section does not go into effect until adopted.
Which it has been adopted, which it has been adopted.
With the exception of gross violations of fiduciary duty, criminal acts or cases where an investigation committee has not returned a final report, this section does not go into effect until adopted.
Which it has been adopted.
Not a pardon. This is yes.
Explain, explain to me the, the rationale to where it would be only into.
The rationale explained by Mr. Chatterton was on the basis of violations of a policy that is no longer a policy.
So can Mr. Chatterton be unmuted and explain to me exactly what the basis of the IC is for?
Absolutely. This measure, this complaint is not brought under the grounds of this new ethics policy. It is brought under the basic rules of uh, conduct in a board as defined in Roberts Rules. These things are not superseded by anything in our policy manual and are absolutely available to be considered. We have heard this from our board consultant and demonstrated behaviors that we've seen over and over again, as well as numerous um, unaddressed complaints about these behaviors that are filed through formal processes and never been followed up with proper investigations. And it has been tolerated to see his conduct on public and abusive behavior towards members on and off official forums of the LNC. It is the right of this body to evaluate who is suited and Mr. Malagon is an immense liability, let alone a factor that is creating mass discord. He is blocking legitimate business that has been done under the same practice or attempting to do so. He's attempting to remove people by a simple majority vote. These conducts are not acceptable. There is immense cases across all elements. And I think there's a vast majority of members of this party that would demand to see this action taken, to at least have an investigation and allow the, the conduct to be examined and presented and evaluated if it is appropriate for removal.
So I will push back on uh, action not being taken when, when brought up every time something has been brought up that I've been asked to address. I have addressed it. Uh, so the proper procedures, one followed, I have as chair gone ahead and uh, did what I said I would do. Um, I'm just not, I, I, I'm just not seeing here exactly Mr. McGee specifically where it would be not in play uh, because anybody can make an IC about anything um, under RONER. If it's mine, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. McGee.
Um, but technically, technically under RONER sixty-three, you can do that. However, the intent of that provision of RONER sixty-three is uh, you know, ideally um, if our bylaws uh, didn't prohibit us from uh, doing that in uh, executive session, ideally, the, the, the province of uh, actually commencing an investigative committee is supposed to be privately. And that's intended to insulate the organization from legal liability. And so the idea that we're going to do this again publicly while literally defaming Mr. Malagon is literally exposing this organization to legal liability. So I mean, if Mr. Chatterton is, is, is amenable to that, you know what? Have at it. But uh, you know, the fact of the matter is uh, the intent of RONER sixty-three is to not do that. And we literally just passed an Ethics Committee Report to try and prevent us from engaging in this exact behavior. So if he would like to do that, have at it. But that is not what the intent is.
Mm-hmm. Give me one moment.
And actually.
Doing some reading. Go ahead.
Uh, I believe we're at time. So once you make a decision, uh, we would just go into votes for everything at that point. Um, whether uh, you know, whatever decision you make, but we are at time.
Okay. Okay. So here's what I believe is the case. Um, RONER does allow the ability to uh, create its, to, for the LNC to create disciplinary rules that differ from Roberts Rules. Those adopted rules govern. Uh, RONER is the only fallback when no rules are in place. So given that these are now the new set of rules, uh, I do believe they take precedent. The question now is uh, whether or not the current IC motion is following these rules. And Mr. McGee, you say they aren't. Can you explain exactly one more time? I know you explained it six times. Explain to me why the current motion is not uh, in accordance with the Ethics Committee uh, Policy Manual amendments?
Well, first of all, uh, now that the Ethics Committee Report has been adopted, there is a process for reporting these uh, requirements, not just going directly to an investigator, investigatory committee. Um, there is certainly, there is still a proviso for doing so, but only when there is a gross violation of fiduciary duty. And based on everything I've heard uh, and everything I've seen in the past week, I don't think any of this actually rises to the level of gross violation of fiduciary duty, criminal acts, and certainly IC has been formed. Um, the Ethics Committee has, that report has been adopted. Well, I, okay, first of all, uh, Mr. Martin, you, you're not recognized. Uh, first of all, uh, that's, that, this is what's been adopted. Um, yeah, I, if you didn't read it, that's on you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, I think in the spirit of the the Ethics Committee Report, uh, I don't believe that the grounds that Mr. Chatterton is speaking on are of the nature of the gross violations of fiduciary duty, criminal acts or cases where an investigatory committee has not turned, returned a final report. So I will rule this out of order. I will await a motion.
The ruling of the chair.
All right. Is there a second? All right. So this is how we'll decide uh, what the board would like to do. And so would we like to go directly into a vote or would like to discuss?
I, I called the question.
There is.
I would like to have an opportunity to, to discuss.
Hold on a second. There's a motion to call the questions. Is there a second?
Back in.
We're actually at time, so that's, that's relevant. Someone have to move.
Motion to extend time for fifteen minutes.
There's a motion to stand.
Second. Objection.
Is there?
Objection.
All right. So raise your hands if you'd like to extend time by fifteen minutes. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All opposed. Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. What? All right. So it's seven versus seven. So motion to extend time fails.
There's only six hands up.
There was a seventh a second ago. Who's the seventh? I thought it was.
Uh, their reactions coming from the audience.
Like accounted vote.
No, I, I'm sorry. I, I lowered my.
Count a vote, please.
You're, you're calling, members calling for roll call vote?
Yes.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote on the extension of time. Uh, Mr. Secretary, please proceed.
Point of information, is this, I'm sorry, is this a majority or two thirds vote?
Uh, motion to extend time, I believe is a majority vote.
Thank you.
When a voter, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chatterton.
I believe the secretary is continually muting individuals when they unmute without even saying words, which is impairing anyone's ability to make potentially privileged motions that do not need to wait in line. And I would like the secretary to be called again to order for allowing people to participate appropriately in the meeting.
Well, I, I will ask Mr. Malagon just to be mindful of uh, making sure that if it is a privileged motion, that the members uh, unmuting give a moment to, to speak. However, I will remind the board that I would like to keep things orderly. So if somebody is not called and like to be called, uh, please raise your hand. If you do have uh, a point of information or point of order, something like that, you can speak out of turn, but I do not want to allow debate when there should be no debate.
Point of personal privilege, doesn't that create a situation, Mr. Chair, where some members of the committee may have a right if they're allowed to finish while others have an unfettered right? This totally segregates the committee into your side, which gets to speak. And then the other side or whoever, Mr. Malagon, doesn't want to speak, getting muted. Um, and without having really, I mean, I've gotten muted many times in this meeting where I did not have the opportunity to say two words. So calling people to order is the already established way of dealing with that, rather than just muting them. And usually you would mute someone after they're called to order. And Adrian would do that at your behest, Mr. Chair, not unilaterally on his own, using the party resources irresponsibly for his personal agenda.
That would be a point of parliamentary inquiry, not personal privilege there. Uh, but to your point, I will make sure that people are being allowed a free uh, the ability to speak up. But I understand that things get heated, people speak over each other at that point. Uh, they will be directed to be muted. Okay, let's go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bost.
Yes, to extend time.
Chatterton.
Yes.
Mr. Dar.
No.
Mr. Dassing.
Yes.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes. I will pass.
Oh, no, no, sorry. I thought I was muted.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
I will vote nay. Oops. Mr. McGee.
Nay.
Mr. Nana.
No.
Mr. Redpath.
I will vote yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Mr. Vincent.
Abstain.
Mr. Watkins.
Yes.
Missina Skavitch.
No.
Mr. Chair, the vote is seven to seven to one to zero. Do you wish to cast a vote?
I do not. Motion fails. So we are on, that was motion to extend time. And that makes us go directly to the vote on.
It's rise to a point of order on this. Um, Mr. McGee presented an absolutely nonsensical uh, argument.
Sounds like debate.
It's not, it's not debate. And besides, there was no debate.
And, and he's imputing, he's literally imputing, my honor, like, like.
If I may, if I may.
Wait, hold on before, before.
The language in question does not invalidate sexual harassment allegations.
Okay, this is debate, Mr. Martin. Please come to order, Mr. Martin. Just as we just discussed, we can't debate. Uh.
It was a point of order, Mr. Chair.
What was your point of order? I don't understand.
It's not recognized.
I mean, i- if you have a point of order, you have to make your point of order. We can't debate.
You didn't say it wasn't.
Cut it with the meeting, please.
I understand, but if you have a point of order, it, it's not, it's not the same thing as debate. All right.
Yes, another thing, you're, you're out of order in, in trying to do that, out of compliance with our policy manual and with our core principles. And, and it's okay if you don't want to take that. It's not.
I don't under.
Mr. 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 Point of Order, I, I ask you to call this gentleman from region one to order.
All right. We're going to continue on with the vote. Nobody's going to speak unless recognized. Appeal the ruling of the chair. Uh, so if I'm not mistaken, upholding the ruling of the chair is an I vote. Voting nay appeals ruling of the chair. Is that, I believe that's correct?
That's correct.
Always confusing. So I is to uphold the ruling of the chair, which would mean that you agree that the motion for the IC committee is out of order. Um, voting no would mean you appeal the ruling of the chair, which means the IC committee is in order. So we will go ahead with a roll call vote. So we will go ahead with a roll call vote. Mr. Bost?
Uh, no to upholding the ruling of the chair.
Mr. Chatterton?
No.
Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dassing?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Sorry, no.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes, uphold the ruling.
Mr. Martin?
No to silencing members and complaints.
I think you put it the wrong.
Yeah, I did.
A point of personal privilege, I need to jump off really quickly. I will be seeding my policy.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Hayes. I will vote yes to uphold the ruling of the chair. Mr. McGee?
I will vote yes to uphold the ruling of the chair.
Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll vote no.
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, pass.
Mr. Vincent?
There was enough notice and we adopted the agenda. I'll be voting nay.
Mr. Watkins?
No.
Missianas Scavage?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the vote is six to eight to zero to zero. Do you wish to cast a vote? Uh, I'll vote yes to my ruling.
Point of, uh. Well, I don't think Mr. Thompson voted, whatever that would be, point of whatever.
Sorry, that's, that's right. That would be a point of, uh, order. Uh, sorry, can we go back? Um. Mr. Thompson?
I am going to abstain.
Seven to eight to one to zero. So it fails since we've already voted on the extension of time and that did fail. Um, we're going to go ahead and move straight on to the IC committee vote, whether or not it's adopted. So, Mr. Secretary, please prepare that ballot. We are good to go, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bost?
He on the.
This is.
Yes.
The IC. This is to create the IC, yes is yes, no is no. Simple. Mr. Chatterton?
Yes.
Mr. Dar?
No.
Mr. Dassing? Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Halcy?
Pass.
Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes to taking our members seriously.
Uh, I will vote no. Mr.
Hey.
Mr. Nana?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll pass.
Mr. Thompson?
Abstain.
Mr. Vincent?
I'll pass.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Missianas Scavage?
No.
Mr. Dassing?
Uh, yeah.
Ms. Halcy?
No.
Mr. Redpath?
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Uh.
I would not abstain.
Mr. Chair, the vote is seven to six to two to zero. You would be writing vote on this. I will vote no.
Yep, yep.
Motion fails for lack of majority? All right, we are on to the next item, which is motion to fill secretary vacancy. And let's see. That is moved by Mr. McGee. Would you like to? Well, I guess, I'm not even sure if we really need to speak on that. Um.
Do I really need to?
No, I don't think so.
Good order, Mr. Chair. On the previous vote, was it appropriate to allow Mr. Malagon a vote on his own disciplinary measure, whether or not he should be investigated?
It is appropriate under RONER.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that's all right. Um, so we're going to go ahead and open this up to nominations, is what we'll do. Um, and then what I would recommend is if we have multiple candidates, we could do. If we'll we'll last some time for speeches, maybe two or three minutes, we'll say, we'll say, well, make it five minutes because it's an officer role. And, um, and if you're all amicable, we could do a majority threshold, and the last vote getter, if we have multiples, gets knocked off. So if everybody's cool with that, that's typically how we like to go about it.
You don't, I I I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand your proposal.
So we're going to open the floor for nominations.
The voting proposal.
The voting proposal would be, um, what is it, approval? Where the last person gets knocked off till we do enough rounds of balloting to get a majority.
That sounds like I would, I was going to move using ranked choice voting. That's what that sounds like to me.
Ew. It gets a little complicated because with ranked choice, you need to have the spreadsheet for it and there's a little bit of math involved, which I'm not sure if we have on the fly.
So I think now it would just be a majority of those. So what Mr. The Chair is proposing, if I'm not mistaken, is that should someone not get the majority on the first round of ballots cast, then the person with the least amount of votes would be knocked off that ballot. Uh, we would do a new ballot with those, with the people that were still there, and then we would continue to go until there was a majority met. I believe that would be different than ranked choice voting.
Correct.
Much like convention.
Correct, exactly, exactly. Uh, Mr. Chatter, you had your hand up, was that? Do you want to go ahead?
Never mind.
Okay.
Look, well, uh, uh, Ms. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Redpath?
I mean, I will move, I will actually make a formal motion to do this. I don't think the math, I'll make the motion. I will, I I move to use ranked choice voting to elect the secretary.
Right, so. All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, because the only thing I'm honestly unsure about is because ranked choice, maybe somebody, everybody here is probably better than me at math. So if somebody knows ranked choice voting, how to, how to do it on the ballot, I know it gets a little complicated, so.
Mr. Chair, all it would mean would be people rank their candidates in order.
That candidate lost, yeah, we move on.
And I think, given the small number of voters here, I think it would be reasonably straightforward to determine the winner.
Okay, all right. There's a motion and a second. Will, uh, is there any debate on ranked choice?
Yes.
Mr. Chattering, go ahead.
Um, I think this is a lot of extra time, and I think with this, um, we should be able to reach an agreement that if we are going to elect a position as serious as the secretary, I think we should absolutely be able to do so in a first past the post voting style. And I would offer an amendment motion to replace that with the first past the post to try to ensure that, uh, anyone elected secretary should have a wide support base. And if someone can't get fifty percent of these, um, this board to elect them, I think that a ranked choice voting to fall down to a lower ranked candidate should not be done. That would be an indication we should consider a different, um, method, and we should give time for our members to evaluate this race. If we don't have fifty percent here that will vote for that, don't you think it's worthwhile that our members should get to hear from candidates in a wider setting and with some time to consider this instead of rushing through um, on similar grounds as like Mr. Ford has extensively talked about, how we continually just push this through for political benefit? This is absurd.
So first past the post voting would mean that even somebody without a majority could be elected.
That's right.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I meant to intend that it requires a majority vote and simple, straightforward. If I, I would like to see a single candidate get fifty percent of the vote or not be elected in this election, or greater than fifty percent of the vote was my intent, and I would ask for a friendly amendment if it has not been seconded.
Has not been seconded yet.
I'll second.
Well, so yes, for a majority, greater than a majority to elected, I don't want to use any kind of ranked choice.
Mr. Chair, where we're at right now is.
We're too too deep.
Mr. Redpath moved to use RCV for the sec vote. I was seconded by Mr. Vincent. Mr. Chatterton is proposing an amendment, which I believe would go back to just how how we've done it. So I don't understand the part, the point of the amendment, because it would just go back to a majority, which is what was going to be done, which is what you were suggesting, and you were just suggesting that.
I I.
So I don't know what the.
I'm motioning that we have a majority vote. Um, but we amend the motion to have a majority vote for our secretary if we're going to do it today, and if we're going to force this through without allowing people to consider the options.
So if that's the case, Mr. Chair, I, what I would say is there, there can't be, the amendment is just to do it the way that we were going to do it per your direction.
From my, from my understanding, if we codify it, that means we'll agree, we vote on it as a committee, so I'm okay with it. But, um, essentially, Mr. Chatterton will be amending the amendments, he'd be amending Mr. Redpath's motion, that would become the main amendment. We'd vote on that if that gets approved, and that's the official style of voting we'd enter into, which is essentially majority, first past the post with with elimination, is my understanding.
I I think first past the post was an incorrect statement on my behalf, and so I just mean a majority vote to win the election. That's all it is.
Okay, all right, is there, uh, I believe that Mr. Watkins seconded, is there debate on this amendment of the amendment?
I have an objection to it.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, then Mr. Redpath?
I I don't believe that you can amend something such that it negates the main motion. Right, so i- if this amendment passes, it has the same effect as voting no.
For, I believe that's, well, I I mean, his, I don't know about the, that's correct, right, so that you would.
I guess that's, it was, I guess if that's our default position anyway, I guess of your point.
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, sorry, that what it seems to me that Mr. Chatterton is proposing is a substitute motion.
Co- correct, okay. Oh, yeah, I think.
Inquiry inquiry, how would this be different than like if we had a motion to thank, and then we strike the word thank and replace it with censure? Right, that would also negate kind of the the like end to end of motion, but it would still be germane, is what I understand. How would this differ from that situation, Mr. Chair?
Well, I mean, if it passes, then we're basically voting on a voting method that we all agree on as a committee. So it's, it's basically the board approving the voting method. If it passes, it would substitute Mr. Redpath's motion. Essentially, it's the same thing as a substitute. We would just be voting that, yeah, we all, we're all in alignment that we're going to enter into this, this voting style.
It would be germane to a motion about voting, uh, methodologies to submit, to to try to switch RCV with a a majority vote.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nana?
Call all questions.
All right, we have a motion to call questions. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objection to calling all questions? All right, hearing none, uh, show of hands for, uh, Mr. Chatterton's substitute motion to, uh, basically replace the Redpath motion with the motion for just regular approval voting. One, two, three, four.
Give me a moment, Mr. Chair.
I'm also having connection issues, so if I'm not reacting, that's probably why.
All right, you do have.
I voted now, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Hands raised, all opposed, say nay. Or raise your hand.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Uh, all opposed to the, uh, Chatterton substitution, please raise your hand.
Understood, sorry, I dipped out for a little bit.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five.
Six.
Six. All right, so motion fails for lack of majority. Um, so we're back on the Redpath motion for ranked choice voting. All in favor of the ranked choice voting method, raise your hand. One, two, three. All right, all opposed? All right, looks like the noes have it. So that's it. I I think we're going to head in as we originally planned. Um, so I will go ahead right now and open the floor up to nominations.
I nominate Adrian Malagon.
I nominate Evan McMahon.
All right, hold on a second. Mr. Malagon, do you accept?
Uh, I do, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, and, uh, who rose their hand for Mr. McMahon?
It was me, Mr. Chair.
Who's speaking?
Austin, aloha.
Gotcha. Uh, Mr. McMahon, do you accept?
Uh, yes, I I guess I would.
All right.
Then thank you, Mr. Martin.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Ben Weir.
I accept.
All right.
Steven, I will nominate Hector Ruus.
Mr. Ruus, do you accept this nomination from the swamp?
I'm grateful and honored, but.
All right, Mr. Ruus does not accept. Any other nominations?
I nominate myself.
Mr. Chatterton nominates himself. All right, last call for nominations. Going once, going twice, going three times, sold. So we will go by, uh, order of nomination for speeches.
Um, Mr. Chair, I apologize, my inability to respond quickly. I was going to nominate myself as well.
Oof, you just closed nominations, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we, we did close it. I do apologize, Mr. Ford. Um.
Simply for the point of, simply for the point of opposing this whole process. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Um, so we'll go ahead. You guys go with three minute speeches. Do you want more time? It's a long night.
It's fine with me.
All right, no objection to three minutes? All right, so we'll go ahead, start with, uh, Mr. Malagon, Mr. Darf, you want to, uh, put up a timer uh, and just make sure we stay on schedule for tonight, and Mr. Malagon, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
There, I think Mr. McGee for the nomination. So I was secretary pro tem for about, was it four or five months? Uh, during Ms. Harlow's first absence, I've been doing the job now. I've been told that I've been doing it well by the chair and by more than half of the board, I guess. Uh, so I would, uh, I would like to continue doing it. I think I'm doing a pretty decent job, and, uh, I look forward to hopefully working with the chair and continuing this so that we have as little, uh, I guess, difficulty during the transition phase as possible. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Malagon. Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Evan McMahon. I'm the chairman of the Libertarian Party of Indiana. I've been involved with the Libertarian Party, uh, since two thousand and ten, grew up in politics, uh, worked the first campaign as a volunteer when I was six years old. Uh, as a leader in Indiana and a former LNC member back in twenty fourteen as an at large, I've helped organize our documents and, uh, note taking processes, uh, streamlining it so that our members can see our minutes, see our records, uh, keep track of what the the party is doing. Uh, I've also proven myself as a parliamentarian leader unofficially. Um, and so, yeah, I'm, uh, very thankful for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. Mr. Weir?
What's going on? Um, I'm Ben Weir. Uh, you guys kind of know me, uh, Region Six alternate right now, but I'm also the chair for LPNH, the most successful state affiliate in the country. Um, I originally started my LP, uh, kind of ventures into like, you know, helping out with by serving as the secretary for LP Sacramento for a couple of terms. Uh, I also helped the Northern area coordinator for California, um, establish eight new county affiliates in which I helped train all of them on how to be a secretary. Um, establish eight new county affiliates in which I helped train all of them on how to be a secretary. Um, I do know, I have like extensive experience pretty much at the county, state and national level. But um, you know, I know that that's pretty much what it needs to stay organized and efficient moving forward. Um, you know, when, when we've launched all those county affiliates, I was able to help them, you know. Train up their secretaries, get on the right foot. Um, and I've also, you know, I'm. I don't know, I'm pretty organized and very technologically advanced and um. You know, I do believe that the secretary position should be one that is functional, not factional. I think that is the biggest key determination here. Um, today, obviously, like I said, I serve as the chair of the most successful libertarian affiliate in the country, LPNH. Um, and I do believe that professionalism, discipline and transparency is really important on the national stage from our LNC. And I look forward to upholding those values if I'm elected. Um, and I believe that um, you know, the LNC deserves someone who can focus on the job, not on the drama. And I ask for your support so that I can do exactly that. Thanks.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Ware. Mr. Chatterton?
Uh, yes, I joined this race um, unexpectedly here. I um, hopefully can help to ensure. That Mr. Malagon is not elected. I believe that both Mr. McMahon and Mr. Weir would make excellent candidates. Um, but I also think that I could do this job as well and um. Therefore, I think that this board needs to take a serious look in the mirror and consider about how these kind of backroom dealings. That have been continually promoting Mr. Malagon baselessly up the ladder to fulfill his um. I'll leave that there, but um, he's continually been pushing these through. We need to be evaluating these decisions based on what is best for the party. And not promoting someone who could be a massive liability to this party. I hope to see that we.
Mr. Chair, we're getting into massive uh, derogatory slander liability issues here per the ethics.
I don't believe I've said anything that would.
I, I would ask that members on both sides of the aisle respect each other, especially members who just previously said that they would like. Other members to be held accountable to for their supposed ad hominens. I think it'd only be appropriate for everybody involved to please. Uh, if you're gonna speak, speak to, to facts, objective facts and, and not ad hominem attacks. Continue, Mr. Chatter.
To a point of order.
Objective.
Mr. Chair, it's a candidate's speech. Candidates have to have a right to say, my opponent sucks. If you don't, then you don't, it's not a fair race. I agree, it's better to focus on positive things. And Mr. Chatterton may not get the role because of his decision to do that, but I think it goes beyond the ethical policy standards. To apply that to a candidate's speech.
I ran for chair twenty twenty-four, I didn't hurl insults, I think other people can do the same. Continue, Mr. Chatter.
We've seen how this board has been handling its business under the leadership of Mr. Nakala and Mr. Malagon. I don't want to see those patterns continue. And as I said, I think either Mr. McMahon or Mr. Weir would be found. Ex- exceptionally good candidates for this role. Um, and so I would ask that vote for anyone but Mr. Malagon.
Thank you, Mr. Chatterton, and now we will move on to a ballot. Uh, Mr. Malagon, please proceed. And uh.
Point of order, should we not have debate?
I don't think.
All questions.
Chair also has a point of order.
All questions.
Questions were called regarding the method of voting that was not inclusive of this election. It was about the motion to set the means of the voting method that were called. This is a new item of business. And it is absolutely in order to have debate on the election of our secretary and I cannot believe members of this body. Would try to rush through such an important decision without even allow.
Hold on, they're not recognized. Give me one second. I don't believe that we had debate.
This is a violation of our member rights, Mr. Chair. I.
Hold on one second.
Point of order indeed. I have been continually.
What is your point of order, Mr. Chatterton?
I have been continually muted when I have been, I have been continually muted when I have been recognized by the chair, including in my nomination speech. And in a recognized point of order immediately afterwards. And this is unreasonable behavior. This is further reason why Mr. Malagon is unfit for this position. He's unfit for a position on this board.
Thank you very much. Um. I.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
What is the nature of your point of order?
Failure to include Noda as a candidate?
Oh no, we will include Noda as well. Um, I was actually getting to that. There should be five, uh, five spots on there. I, I don't see. I mean, we don't typically do debate for, uh, for elections. We do speeches, we go straight to a vote. Um, so that's, that's how it's been. All questions were called, so technically debate is out of order. That's how I'm gonna rule it. It's also unorthodox to how we normally proceed.
It's the ruling of the chair.
Alright. Share, I think that's dilatory because at this point, I, I don't see.
You refuse to take the appeal, I'll take it myself.
Mr. Chair, this is, these are threats, this is.
If you refuse to take the ruling of the chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, can we?
This is the third time. To Roberts rules. Motion, privileged motion.
Hold on, unmute, Mr. Martin. What, what, it's say exactly which section you believe that this is out of order?
In Roberts rules, if someone makes an appeal to the, an appeal to the ruling of the chair and you choose not to take it. Another member of the body may take that ruling up, up, may actually take the vote on whether or not to appeal your ruling. You can't just ignore an appealing, uh, an appeal to the ruling of the chair. My appeal is, is, uh, is not dilatory at all. The appeal is based on the fact that, I'm, I'm sorry, hold on just a second. I have to silence this thing. I'm sorry, my original point of order was that the uh, uh, the dis- this is from the point of order that the discussion, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought, sir.
So you're saying that you believe that, because, because here's where.
Getting muted a bunch of times really makes it hard to do my job. And you're refusing to call one guy to order. And it's kinda ridiculous, Mr. Chair.
Stay, stay on track. What is your, what is your?
You need to have the opportunity to weigh in and say, yeah, I, I think you should vote for this guy or yeah, I should, think you should vote for this guy. It is extremely inappropriate. That our member rights are being straitjacketed right now.
But here's the thing.
Talk in the open because of, because of this kind of leadership and Mr. Chair, I am urging you, begging you, please stop the discussion.
But here's the problem, the discussion, the, Mr. Uh, Nana's motion was a motion to call all previous questions. Unless I'm misremembering, that's how things went down. So.
My point of order on that matter was that, that was on the basis of choosing the method to vote on this. Those questions were called, it was my amendment and then the original motion that finished and then we entered into. The election, which is a new item of business.
Oh, no, it's not true because it's on this item, so all previous, all previous items are called.
And that would require.
This was not on the table.
That's not true. It's all previous items were called.
It would require two thirds.
This was not a previous item at the time.
Yes, it was because we were on this item. We were on.
We're on a motion to set the voting method that is different than a motion of holding the election.
It's germane to the item, we were on that motion.
Why is it your fixation to cut debate on our secretary?
Mr. Chair. Dilatory.
Alright, let's go ahead and continue to the vote.
I. I can appeal this ruling of the chair. Is there a second? Yes.
Mr. Boss.
What are we voting on right now?
I second Mr. Martin's motion to appeal the ruling for the chair.
We are voting on the.
I'd like to hear this motion from the floor. We appeal the ruling of the chair.
Alright.
Mr. Chair, how would you like to proceed?
We're going to.
Do we have the, do?
Let him, let him talk, let him talk. It's fine.
I'm putting the motion from the floor to hear the, appeal the ruling of the chair. Shall the ruling of the chair be sustained? All those in favor, please say aye.
Objection, dilatory, objection, dilatory.
Alright, you didn't get enough eyes.
Yes is the ruling to sustain the ruling and no is a vote to overturn the ruling. This is.
Mr. Chair, I've muted everyone. Please unmute. I, I, this is just absurd.
The chair has to take an appeal to the ruling of the chair. That's the.
Mr. Chair, how would you like to proceed? Uh, you're muted.
We should have debate over the election of our secretary.
First off, let me, uh, first off, Mr. Malagon, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll direct you to uh, mute members of the board. Um.
Mr. Chair, I put Mr. Chatterton and Mr. Martin in the waiting room. I, I just can't take it anymore. Um, how would you like to proceed and I'll let them back in for the vote?
Let me, let me ask this of members of the body. Is, is anybody here gonna? Does anybody here want to overturn my ruling, which is the ruling that uh. All previous questions have been called, which according to Ronner seems pretty cut and dry, but is there anybody else here that believes the same?
Yes, I think that uh.
Wholeheartedly.
Because I think we got new member, we got new nominees for secretary afterwards. And it wa- it happened after calling all questions, but that's, I, I think he expressed that uh, numerous times already, but yeah, I feel the same way.
Okay, if there's, if there's widespread support, then let the members back in and we'll move on to a ballot whether or not to uphold the ruling of the chair.
So this would be a ballot on uh, the ruling of the chair.
The ruling of the chair would be uh, that all previous questions were called. And that we would, that includes this ballot or includes debate on. Excuse me, it would include debates on uh, the main motion, which is the motion to appoint.
The ruling of the chair, so hold on, let me just get this before I let them back in and just wanna make sure of that. So that we have some quiet. Okay, so appeal the ruling of the chair. That's all previous questions were called?
Yep.
Okay, like that?
Appeal the ruling of the chair, all previous questions regarding the sec item were called, correct?
Oh, you know what? I, hold on, sorry. Um, I need to. Head into a, a new ballot, I did this wrong. Hold on. Um, so what I want to do actually is. Yeah, I'm gonna have to fix this later, okay? Alright, so.
And by the way, after this, we're gonna have to have a motion to debate because I, I don't see it on the agenda, so. We're gonna have to go through this, we're gonna have to have a motion to debate and then we'll debate and then we'll go from there.
I debate on what, Mr. Chair?
Um. Whether or not there's gonna be debate or on the secretary position. So this is, this, they're trying to appeal a motion that all previous questions have been called, we'll let them. And then they can open up, you know, uh, item to debate. I'll recognize them for, they have to go into debate. Cause it's not a part of the normal process, it's not automatic.
Just to make sure, so you want a new ballot for allowing, this would be a, a debate ballot, this is gonna go before, before the sec vote.
Correct.
Okay. So, hold on. Okay, so. This is going to be. Let me just make sure. So. And this is going to be, let me just make sure that I have it right on the screen. To allow debates on the. Sec votes, motion, is that correct?
Correct, and someone would have to make that motion.
Okay, but, well, once we get there, we'll get there. Okay, I will, uh, am I good to let them back in?
Go ahead. Alright, welcome.
Uh, one more second. There we go. They should be back in.
Mr. Chatterton and Mr. Martin, are you back with us? Alright, so your colleagues have.
I have a point of order, Mr. Chair.
Your, your colleagues have indicated interest in moving forward.
I have a point of.
With, with the motion to.
Point of order.
Alright, uh, unmute Mr. Chatterton?
It is inappropriate to remove members from a meeting without having a vote of this body. I demand that these actions be called to order and I will be filing formal complaints on this matter for the violations of my rights as a member of this board.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Chatterton.
Agree, that was out of order, Mr. Chair. There's a process that has to be followed in order to remove people, otherwise you violate member rights and.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. This is not debate. Let's go ahead with the vote and then we'll continue. Okay? Cool.
So just so that everyone is aware, the vote that is currently on the table is to appeal the ruling of the chair. Uh, and appeal the ruling of the chair of all previous questions regarding the sec item being called. An aye vote means that you uphold the ruling of the chair. Uh, we would go, you know, straight into the vote. A nay vote would be to overturn the ruling of the chair. Mr. Boss?
I vote. No.
Mr. Chatterton?
Vote no.
Mr. Dar?
Yes.
Mr. Dasing?
No.
For Ford?
No.
Ms. Hayes or Ms. Halcy?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No to silencing debate.
I will vote aye. Mr. McGee? I will pass Mr. McGee for now. Mr. Nana?
Aye.
Mr. Redpath?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Next.
Mr. Watkins?
No.
Ms. Anna Scavitch?
Yes, uh, wait.
This is to uphold the ruling of the chair that all previous questions were called?
Yes.
Mr. McGee again. If Mr. McGee is not present, perhaps Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. McGee was muted. Uh, aye.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the vote is eight to seven to zero to zero. Do you wish to cast a vote?
Yes, I'll vote aye. Alright, motion, uh, my, my ruling is sustained and just to be clear, here's gonna, here's the policy on the mute. Uh, button, how it's gonna work. If a member wishes to raise a point of order, a point of parliamentary inquiry, et cetera, they can do so, pause, I'll recognize you right away. And then you can speak. It's not an opportunity to say point of information and just start uh, talking and debating or saying your point. I will hear you, I will call on you. But uh, we can't, we, we have to make sure we do it in turn. I'll be fair to you, just be fair to me on that. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to a vote. You've got several options, Malagon, McMahon, Weir, Chatterton and Noda. Um, and uh, I guess an abstention as well. So we'll go down the list. At your leisure, Mr. Uh, Secretary.
Uh, Mr. Thompson, I believe has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, should no one get fifty percent plus one? Does this, uh, do we are we dropping the lowest?
Yes.
Mr. Boss?
Uh, Mr. McMahon.
There we go.
Mr. Chatterton? Mr. Dar?
Malagon?
Mr. Dasing?
Mr. Weir?
Mr. Ford?
Mr. McMahon?
Ms. Halcy?
Sorry, Malagon.
Mr. Martin?
Man, I think you're the man.
A point of personal privilege?
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Boss?
Uh, can we ask that the audience please unmute themselves?
Uh, yes. Perhaps we should do a mass mute and then let board members unmute themselves?
Uh, yes, give me just a moment, Mr. Chair, I will mute all.
Thank you, Mr. Malagon.
Everyone is muted. If you are a board member that has now yet voted, please unmute before you cast your vote. We are on myself. I will vote for myself. Mr. McGee.
I will vote for Mr. Malagon.
Mr. Nana?
Pass.
Mr. Redpath? You're muted, sir.
Sorry, McMahon.
Mr. Thompson?
Pass.
Mr. Vincent?
Mr. Weir.
Mr. Watkins?
I'll pass.
Miss Tina Scavitch?
Mr. Malagon.
Back to Mr. Chatterton.
Pass again.
Mr. Nana?
Vote for Malagon.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, um, Evan.
Mr. Watkins? You're muted, Mr. Watkins, if you are speaking.
Sorry, my connection is not going. Um, Mr. Weir.
Mr. Chatterton?
Vote for Mr. McMahon.
Mr. Chair, the valley is Malagon, the tally is Malagon six, McMahon six, Mr. Weir three, Mr. Chatterton zero, Nota zero. Uh, your vote will not make a difference because no one has a majority.
All right, so Mr. Chatterton is, uh, eliminated. Mr. Weir, do you wish to stay in the fight?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll continue with a new ballot.
All right, Mr. Boss.
Uh, McMahon.
Mr. Chatterton?
Pass.
Mr. Dar.
Can you hear Malagon?
Mr. Dousing.
Ben Weir.
Mr. Ford.
Mr. Ford, I think you're muted.
Uh, pass.
Ms. Halcy.
Malagon.
Mr. Martin?
Evan McMahon.
I will vote for myself. Mr. McGee?
Malagon.
Mr. Nana?
Malagon.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll vote for, uh, McMahon.
Mr. Thompson?
I will also vote for McMahon.
Mr. Vincent?
Mr. Malagon.
Mr. Watkins?
Pass.
Miss Yana Scavitch?
Mr. Malagon.
Mr. Chatterton?
Vote for Mr. McMahon.
Mr. Ford?
Hmm. This is difficult. I'll pass one more time.
Uh, Mr. Watkins?
Evan.
Mr. Ford?
Evan.
Mr. Chair, the tally is seven to seven to one to zero to zero. Uh, your vote will not matter. No member has the majority.
All right, Mr. Weir is eliminated. We'll move on to a new ballot.
Mr. Boss?
Uh, McMahon.
Mr. Chatterton?
McMahon.
Mr. Dar?
She was.
Malagon.
Mr. Dousing? Mr. Dousing, you're muted.
Pass.
Mr. Ford?
Uh, McMahon.
Ms. Halcy?
Malagon.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. McMahon.
I'll vote for myself. Mr. McGee?
Malagon.
Mr. Nana?
Pass.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll vote for McMahon.
Mr. Thompson?
Evan.
Mr. Vincent?
Karen Ann Harlos. No, I'm joking. I'm not, uh, Mr. Malagon.
Mr. Watkins?
Uh, Evan.
Miss Yana Scavitch?
Mr. Malagon.
Mr. Dousing? Mr. Dousing, you're muted. If you're still.
Not enough.
Mr. Nana?
Uh, I'm, am I correct in assuming that, I guess the chair would have to break a tie? Well, it wouldn't reach majority. I'm trying to avoid a scenario that would knock both candidates out. That would be terrible. Um. Is Mr. Das- Mr. Dousing voted for Nota?
That is correct.
Yeah, I, I like to change my votes, uh, to Evan.
Mr. Nana?
McMahon.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the vote is six to nine to zero to zero. A majority has been reached. Your vote doesn't matter.
All right, then, uh, I guess, uh, Mr. McMahon, it looks like you are the new Secretary of Libertarian National Committee. Congratulations.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Third.
Objection. Motion to adjourn and an objection. We'll take it to a vote. Um. Mr. Malagon, please, uh, sub a ballot for, in a German.
One moment.
Point of parliamentary inquiry, are motions to adjourn objectionable?
We, we have to vote on it.
Understood.
There's no debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Mr. Chatterton?
Yes. Sorry.
No.
Mr. Dousing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
While I truly want this meeting to last forever, I will vote yes to adjourn.
Ms. Halcy?
Pass.
Mr. Martin?
Um, yes.
I'll vote yes. Mr. McGee?
Pass.
Mr. Nana?
Um. Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll pass.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Miss Yana Scavitch?
Yes.
Ms. Halcy?
Yep.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Redpath?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Chair, the vote is thirteen to one to one to zero. Your vote does not make a difference here.
All right, we are adjourned at nine forty-four PM Eastern Standard Time. Enjoy the rest of your weekend and, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Everybody.
You should have tried negotiating in conversation, Adrian. Why not?
Nice. Uh, LNC After Hours. See y'all later at Real Swamp Cast. Shout out LP Lights. Love you guys.